Morning, everybody. It's nine o'clock. We're gonna start. We'll start off with a roll call, please.
Rave.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Who fall.
Here.
Frantic.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Sendor has been excused. Berlin.
Here.
Miranda. Miranda.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, thank you.
You could.
Usay.
Here.
Mika.
Here.
Btech.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Chudy. Here Carl.
Here.
Weiner. Murdig.
Here.
Elifson.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Negro.
Here.
Metzener.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Nineteen present.
Next, we'll move on to a moment of silence before the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the equality of our interests. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a motion to approve and adopt the agenda.
Dick.
Oh.
I would just like to make a correction on the agenda for the number K under number five. The resolution says I have ten years of service and I actually have twelve, so I'd like to.
That out.
Yeah, otherwise I'll.
I can't, the resolution's been changed.
Okay, thank you. So I'll make the resolu- or make the motion to do the agenda.
Do you have a second?
I'll, this is Huber. I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huber. Next, we go to the. Public comment period. We have two people that want to speak today. Joe Bates and Sandy D- Derrigan, whoever wants to go first, come up to that little table. Okay, we, we had a motion to approve the agenda. We didn't hold a load in favor of the I.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay.
My name is Sandy Derrigan. I'm a member of the Bad River Band and I reside on the reservation. Last August, I came before this board about the false information, the outright lies and the racial stereotyping that this board used to lobby for the non-tribal residents in the town of Sandburn. I told this to the board then that the county administrator, Dan Grady, should be held accountable for the lies and stereotyping that resulted in the genocidal propaganda put out by Senator Quinn. I won't ask for an apology because it wouldn't be sincere. I asked back then that those false statements be retracted and corrections made. As you're aware, this board's lobbying efforts cost, uh, caused one million dollar loss of allocated funds derived from tribal gaming revenues to be withheld from the tribe. That's what you guys did. Last month, I attended the Tribal County Board Meeting held in Bad River. Once again, I heard more requests for money by this county. I find this horribly upsetting. This board has the audacity to ask and expect more money from the tribe, yet this board is responsible for the one million dollars currently being held withheld. It's from those funds that the tribe uses for things the county is asking for. You realize that, don't you? Yeah. That's what that money is usually used for. It's being withheld because of what you guys did, that lobbying efforts. Yeah, you were successful, all right. Well, after the meeting, I asked the county administrator, Dan Grady, and board member Elifson, what the town of Sandburn paid for the tax-exempt people in the town of Sandburn. They told us, they told me, garbage. They pick up our garbage. That's a lie. My tribe has paid for that all the time without a cost to those taxpayers. We bear that cost. Those are part of the lies that you guys did that caused this loss. And now you're coming to my tribe asking for money? The tribe provides that service. I told you that. But your demands and lobbying efforts to Senator Quinn and Representative Green on behalf of certain town of Sandburn taxpayers created a genocidal campaign that has caused not just racial tension, but a loss of one million dollars to the tribe. I again ask that this board correct misinformation, retract those false statements, and tell the actual truth. That's all I got to say.
Hey, Joe. Thanks, Sandy.
Morning. Joe Bates, Bad River Tribal Member. I also was in attendance at the tribal board meeting, county board meeting. And yeah, I heard the request for additional monies. What this board helped do was create another financial hardship for our tribe that, as Sandy had indicated, we use that money to help offset the costs for various services out on the reservation. Currently, our tribe pays, we have mutual understanding with sheriff and we pay for policing out on the reservation. We currently just renewed monies for the EMS services out there. And you know, over the last year and a half, I as well listened to every county board meeting out of this, this office right here. And I was appalled at some of the people that I know in here that referred to us out there as slackers. Yeah. You know. So, um, I would also like to say, with the garbage pickup, huh? I was appalled at that answer. I will let you know that when I was twenty-nine years old and I moved back here to the reservation, I did not have a job. I volunteered my services to pick up the garbage in the town of Sandburn that whole time when I first moved back here. So whoever fed you the BS about garbage pickup out on the reservation, tell them to go feed it elsewhere because it's not needed here. Anyhow, um, the other thing I wanted to mention, I got wind that our mayor, your mayor, has considered redoing the resolution supporting Bad River in their fight against Enbridge so that the city or the county could accept Enbridge dollars. And I would certainly hope that is not the case because it will, it will further damage our relations with this county board, the city of Ashland, and the Bad River Tribe. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Next to number four of the presentation by the Ascent Chamber of Commerce, Mary.
I have to sit. Oh, my gosh, that's so hard to sit and talk. I feel like I'm at the congressional hearing in Washington, DC. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning. No, I just wanted to tell you, I hope you like your bag. I figured everybody can use a Wisconsin state map, so I put that in there along with some other items. But just wanted to go over some things from 2023 and as we head into '24. We had definitely had a great year. I did put an economic impact study in your plethora of stuff and it showed we, Ashland County was at about sixty-five million dollars in visitor spending, which is up. Um, it was very interesting because 2021 was a great year for us. Actually, COVID, we, in Ashland County, we did very well during COVID because people traveled to our area. So unlike the bigger areas of Milwaukee, Madison, Green Bay, Eau Claire, we, we did pretty good. So we have been growing in tourism. It's more so with the average daily rate, the acronym of ADR. As you know, all of you know, if you're traveling now, you're paying more for hotel rooms. VRBOs for, well, we paid more for everything, but hotel rooms really have increased since COVID. So that, that really creates increase on our economic impact. And when we look at, you know, the rooms, the rooms and the room counts in Madeline Island, Ashland, there's some in lower Ashland or southern Ashland County, but the room nights have, have really been strong. So it was a great year overall. Copper Falls had a good year as well. During COVID, I always like to say this number, they used to do about one hundred and sixty-nine thousand in their visitors. And during COVID, they went up to two twenty, two hundred and twenty thousand visitors. And which was such a genius move on their part was they didn't, you know, everything was touchless, so they didn't sell those day passes. Everything had to be a year and you had to go online. So they brought in a lot of revenue for the state park. Um, and so their numbers have gone down a little bit, are still very, very strong for Copper Falls. So waterfalls have always been real special to us. And one of the things that we're going to be doing this year is we are writing a grant for a destination marketing research program where it looks at really all the data that we can gather about who is our visitor, where are they from, what is their behaviors, what are they like, where are the potential markets that we want to tap into? And I, I think we, we've never done this for the county. And as you can see, this logo, it's been around, I've been around here twenty-five years and this logo's been around here probably fifty. And the one thing about it is that it is very simple and I do, I do like some things about it because Ashland County really is a lot about water. And from Madeline Island all the way down to Copper Falls, I mean, you all, everybody has water. And so, um, but we, we are going to really look at branding and how we're branding our county. Um, the one interesting challenge we have is that we have our whole county from Ashland down to Butternet and then we have Madeline Island. And that, we, we can never forget Madeline Island. It's always such a part of us, especially in tourism, because it's a real, uh, it's, it's a driver, economic driver for us in tourism. So we try and really partner with our Shawamican Bay friends so that we can get really more bang for our buck. So just a couple of things I wanted to talk about in '23, we did a reprint. I put it in your package. It's the Follow the Mural Road. It's been a really good promotion for us and we added on so many murals between Marengo and Ashland, actually in Butternet. So we reprinted seventy-five hundred of those in '23. And we also, um, I was looking at, uh, different things that happened in '23. Of course, you all know we had snow. We had a lot of snow in '23. We had a really wet spring. We had a lot of mosquitoes. And I don't know if you remember this, but people did not camp because there were so many. Do you remember that? Remember, there were so many mosquitoes. You could find a camp spot if you were lucky, or you don't normally can. Um, I remember things like that, like, you know, how cold is it? Do deer hang outside? No, you know, because it's not as cold anymore. Uh, uh, that's how my mind works. So anyway, um, July through September, '23 were really strong. So I think that our '23 numbers are going to be really great. We won't get our economic impact figures until, uh, June from the state, but I, I think they're going to be real strong again for us. Um, for '24, I think, uh, one of the, uh, kind of most interesting things we've done so far is Joanne and I went to Toronto to be a part of a outdoor adventure show. And then we had a media group, uh, event that we were invited to, to talk to group travel planners for media throughout Canada. Um, everybody wants that international business and we feel like, you know, we're just an organic and, uh, really an organic complementary place for Canada. So it was a really good show for us, but there's a lot of people that came by that had no idea where Wisconsin was. And I can tell you, they now know where Wisconsin is. But anyway, it was really fun and created a lot of awareness for that. Um, we will be hosting a Wisconsin Real Partners. I hope some of you will sign up for that. That's going to be in May. Wisconsin Real Partners will be here May thirteenth and fourteenth. Um, our Bird and Nature Festival kicks off on May twenty-third, fourth, and fifth. We use the whole county for that area from Carolina Lake down in southern Ashland County, Morgan Falls, Copper Falls, all the way up here to the shoreline and estuaries. And, um, just wanted you to know that we're always keeping, um, up on our snowmobile fishing ATV and color reports. Those are really, really important for Ashland County. We do it as a whole. It, it is labor intensive. Um, snowmobile wasn't as labor intensive this year, unfortunately. But, um, fishing has been good. It's been an interesting, um, Brad can attest to this, but an interesting conversation this year with smelt because there was a lot of smelters that thought we might be smelting right now. A couple of weeks ago when the waters started, when the ice went out. And there's actually a netting, um, law that says you can't smelt basically until April first. So, you know, once we put that on the site, we haven't gotten very many smelt calls. Kind of did the trick. We all kind of felt like, okay, it'll still happen, you know, the second week in April, but we weren't sure. So, um, anyway, so I would entertain any questions, comments, concerns that you have? Yes.
Yeah.
Well, you're welcome. John, are you part of Glidden Area Development Corporation? Okay, I'm going to be contacting you because I'd like to come to one of your meetings and talk to you folks. So, yeah. Are you Lily as well? Okay. Okay. Yep. Yeah, you've got a lot of good things going on there. Yes, Ms. Kathy.
Hey, Mary. Um, for something in the future, it would be nice if we could get like a tour bus to go down to Gigi, Caudy Gigi, to view the elk in the fall when they're out. I've never seen them, you know, out on the, in the fall. And it would be nice if we could get a bus and maybe do a, how they came here, a little spiel about that.
Yeah, you know, we do that for the Bird and Nature Festival. We don't have a bus, but we have different cars that go down there. And Kathy, um, oh, I can't think of her name, but she heads, uh, she heads the event. And it's, it's, they typically see elk, so it's a pretty popular event, but it is part of the Bird and Nature Festival.
Okay, I didn't know that.
But yes, I, I mean, that, that's awesome. It's something very unique that we can promote, so.
Yeah.
Marty? Oh, oh, hi, guys. See? How are you? Because it's all about leave here. You know, it's interesting. This is a really interesting thing is that because of the warm weather, weather, we've had a lot of business here. We've had a lot of rooms. And some of the hotels here have done okay. But you'll see like it's different, you know, in some of the more, uh, snowmobile areas like Iron River, lower southern, southern Ashland County, um, Hurley, they've done very bad. But we, you know, we're not, we're in that area where we don't get as much snow, so, and we don't get as many snowmobiles. Um, but we have a lot of corporate business. And I think that, we were talking about this at our hotel meeting and it's interesting, but yeah. And people are spending more money on food and items.
Microphone, please.
Sorry. Seeing we didn't have any snow and the lake really wasn't frozen over, how much do you think that that hurt our local economy here in Ashland?
You know, we did a, we did a survey and for the bait shops and for fishing, they were probably seventy-five percent down. Um, but again, there were some other properties that were, um, cobblestone Americans showed an increase over January of two thousand and twenty-three, which was amazing because it was more, uh, corporate and construction. So a lot of construction has started. Now, this is going to put us, you know, postpone us. But, um, I would say probably going to see a twenty-five percent decrease in first quarter in Q1. Um, you'll get your sales tax on a quarterly basis, correct? And I don't know, I think that because, uh, food and retail and those expenditures have been still high, it's going to be interesting to see how it pans out. Anybody else? Oh, hi, Liz.
Hi, Mary. Um, thank you for coming here and thank you for your presentation. Um, I just had a question about mosquitoes. Um, is there anything that, you know, they can plant more, um, different vegetation that scare away the mosquitoes? I mean, is there any pointers that you think?
You know, it's our state bird, so I, I don't know. That might be a question for, uh, the scientists in the room. I don't know that answer. What about you, Mike Stark? Do you have any questions? I'm getting to the island. We do our inline marathon over on Madeline Island. Fourteenth of June is always the week. Yes, exactly. So, all right, anything else, anybody? No? Okay, well, thank you all. I appreciate the time. And you had a great Ashland County day because it's going to be a great Ashland County day out there.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Let's go to the regular agenda. Five A approval of the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four county board minutes. Go.
I make for adoption.
Matt's. Vote in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Five B approve the applying for a CV, CDVG grant and approve setting a date for a public hearing. So we have Kelly Westland on the line to help explain this grant. Kelly?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, perfect. Sorry, thank you for that. Um, apologies that I couldn't be there in person today. Um, this grant is an opportunity. It's the, uh, the fourth round of some grants that were made available, I think back in twenty-twenty, actually. And, um, there is a project in Ashland County that we know is eligible, which is the, um, second phase of the Ashland Community Shelter on the west end of the city. And I think you are all probably familiar with the two-story building there that has, um, twelve units. And, um, the idea is to renovate the building and they're going to keep eleven as sort of longer-term transitional housing with one, uh, available as laundry facility. And we're also working, uh, with the Northwest Community Services Agency, um, Bill Bailey, to perhaps incorporate some, um, uh, durable energy measures and then, uh, Northwest Regional Planning Commission to help put the whole package together. And it is due on May fifteenth, but they do require a public hearing in advance, which is part of why we need to try to get something on the calendar for April, even though I know there's a, a reorganizational meeting. Um, but it's a, a really good opportunity to get some funding in to finish that next phase because in both Ashland and Basild counties, there really is a lack of that longer-term supportive transitional housing. Um, and, uh, yeah, it will have until May of twenty-twenty-six to complete all of the work. So the timeline is, is much more doable than the last time around. Um, anybody have any questions?
Kelly, Matt McKenzie, I, I guess I'm a little confused why this is on here. Um, the city had secured grant funding for this project and they were set to go forward and they came to the city and said they couldn't use the money. So I'm having a hard time understanding why now that's going through the county, when in the first place the grant funding was secured for them to do this project.
Yes, um, so in the conversations that I've had, uh, my understanding is that when the funding was secured for the city, uh, to pass it on to Northwest TSA, that was the first round of this funding where, um, there were maybe seven months to complete all of the architectural drawings, put out bids and complete the work before, uh, it had to be done according to the grant deadline. And now that some time has passed and they still have these extra funds left over, uh, when Northwest TSA turned the funding back, they said it just wasn't something that they felt they could complete in that short timeframe. And, um, when I reached out to see if the city was going to reapply, they said that they weren't planning to pursue it at this time. So, um, the county was, at least the folks that I spoke with, were, were interested in still seeing the project move ahead and either could be the eligible lead applicant. But again, this time, if we apply for this funding, uh, the timeline is significantly longer. It goes through twenty-twenty-six in May for them to finish the work, which is, again, it's a lot more doable than doing it in seven months.
I, I guess my only comment to that would be, they came to us knowing what the time limits were for that financing and said they could do it. The city went through the effort of, of writing for the grant, receiving the grant, and then we ended up having to turn it back. Um, and you know as well as anybody what happens when you start turning grant money back when you apply in the future. So, uh, yeah, it's, it's, to me, I, I'm having a hard time where I could support this based on that history.
And I can understand that, um, though I think that, again, partly, one, we already know that this one is an eligible project because it qualified the last time. But two, uh, this time with the added partners, including Northwest Regional Planning Commission and, um, Czech Bay Renewables and then the added capacity that I can offer for UW extension, I think that it's just, uh, it's, you know, it's a better time with, with more hands on deck to make this come together.
I, I just want to point out how difficult this process was for the city. That is not a popular project. And the, the city council, you know, went out on the edge to, to do this and continue to do this. And it's not been in a project that is well embraced. It's something that is needed, no doubt about that. And I know that there's some, some transitional housing currently in, in place, but it's faith-based and it's not, you know, just beyond that. So I, I guess again, I'm, I'm having a hard time and I don't think I can support this as it is right now.
Kelly, this is Lauren Agro. Um, so with the longer period of time, um, does the homeless shelter have in place some of those pieces that they know they will need for this now?
Yeah. Um, yes, I mean, so this time there are, again, some of the, uh, the work that was done in the first, uh, round. And then again, with some added capacity with extra partners this time, who also have some experience with the CDVG program.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, Liz.
Kelly, my question is, um, with the people that are qualified for these longer-term housing, um, will they be still on a month-to-month basis? will they be still on a month-to-month basis? Will they be background checked? Everything, you know, connecting with services monthly, making sure that maybe it would be less than a year if they could connect with the same, with the services that they need. How are they going to go and maintain that? And I would stand behind them. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. So much of the sort of the legwork that is done when folks come into the shelter is through Northwest Community Services Agency as part of the continuum of care. And when people come into the shelter, they do get connected with a variety of resources to help them get access to healthcare and, you know, find a job to have some kind of stable living situation. And ideally, when folks are in the existing shelter, they're back, you know, into a longer-term, stable housing situation in a matter of months. But there are a few folks that come through that are going to need some longer-term support. And so that's the idea behind, you know, these extra eleven units is that essentially up to, you know, a year or two, I'd have to ask, was, is it check with Millie at the Northwest TSA? But sometimes folks just can't, you know, get all their ducks in a row and be standing on their own in six months or less. And this is something that is a need in the community. There is some very, very limited sober transitional housing, but there isn't really anything available for women specifically. And much of that doesn't have the staffing resources that it needs at this point, as far as I'm aware. So yes, the goal is to get folks into a stable, longer-term situation where they can build the skills and resources that they need, be able to move out and have something more stable going forward.
Thank you.
With all of those other.
All right.
One last thing, Kelly. When we get to, so if we request that this public hearing is held on the sixteenth, will we have more details of what exactly the plan is going to entail?
Yes. I don't know that it will be in finalized form, just because we still do have some legwork, especially incorporating the weatherization and renewable energy aspects into this version this time around. But I think that we should have something much more concrete by then.
That's cool. I'd like a good skeleton at least. Also, I want to say to the board, I have some seniors that are waiting on this housing that have been working their way through all the different steps. And this phase of this housing project for them to go into is what's holding them back right now. It's, it really, it is very hard on their mental health to be in the situation to be homeless first, but then to linger and linger and linger not being able to get this second part of the housing project going because we don't have good housing for them. It's, I'm watching some people that started at a really low and went, followed all the steps, got into place and are just lingering now. And I'm watching them starting to decline. So I would, I would support doing this.
What else?
One more comment. Thank you for bringing up the sober living aspect of this also because it's much needed for women in this area. Thank you, Kelly.
And I'll also add, oh, sorry. Apologies. So because there is a public hearing, when we do come back with a more firm proposal, then that will be another opportunity for some sort of, you know, feedback that we can incorporate between that meeting and the final application. If there are still, you know, issues of return, then that is, you know, those are something that we can address at that point as well.
This is Martin Vitak. I don't think there's any question of the need for this project. And even in light of Matt's or the city's unfortunate experience there. But with that in mind, I'd make a motion that we approve the application and hold a public hearing on April sixteenth as requested.
We have a second.
This is Laura Nagro. I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have C. Approve applying for a safer streets grant.
Yep. So we have Matt Erickson on the line to explain this one.
Good morning, everybody. So the Safer Streets for Grant application that we are considering is for basically a safety audit of all of our county highways. Consultant would be hired to do a comprehensive look at the highways for all modes of transportation, vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles. They study, study what can be done to reduce or eliminate accidents and fatalities on our highways. So we are planning to work together with Bayfield County and also with the Bad River Tribe. Bad River has already approved it from their end to move forward with this grant. Bayfield County has a meeting tonight to approve or disapprove if they want to be part of it. So yeah, we need a commitment from the county board to partner with, with the other two entities to move forward with this grant. Be happy to answer any questions if there is.
I'd make a motion that we move forward with this.
Mike Berlin, second that.
Have a motion and a section to approve. Hold in favor, say aye.
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 You want to post? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We go to five D. A public health updated fee schedule. Liz.
Hello. So the update that we have here is specific to updated codes through DAT cap ATCP seventy-six and seventy-eight. They updated the specific to public pools and water attractions and also recreational education camps. And what the updated, the update to the codes, what it did is it created new classifications as far as licensing. So we need to update our fee structure to reflect that. Previously, rec ed camps, we only had one specific classification for it and now it is broken into, we have six different classifications for it. So without an updated fee structure, we actually have no cost associated with licensing for these businesses with the new updated codes. The same would hold true for pools and water attractions. It was previously a much smaller classification and they reclassified those. So to be compliant with how the codes and the licensing are, we need to update a fee schedule for it. Any questions?
I'll make a motion. We approve the public health updated fee schedule as presented.
Motion made to approve. Do it in a second.
This is Huber. I'll second it.
Conflict of interest in that the city is looking at developing a splash pad. Would this apply to municipalities and would the, if, if the municipality went in the direction of a splash pad, would they need to have a license under this? All right, then, then I, as a city member of the city council, I'll have to abstain. Thank you.
Any more comments? Motion made to approve. In a second. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to post?
Abstention.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Liz. We go to F five E. Resolution R O three, twenty twenty-four, fourteen sixty-three. Set wages for county officials elected in November twenty twenty-four.
So this.
What is the previous wage schedule that we have for these? Because we just have from twenty twenty-five on, we don't have what they're at now.
Oh, um. Heather, can you answer where you're at now? Right now they're at fifty-eight. So what this.
Can you do that on the microphone so it's on the record?
We're currently at thousand.
Right. So what this resolution does is it puts them on par with other department heads. Like Mary Jo and Chris Hoffman. Those similar-sized departments.
Is anybody who's gonna do it up?
Sorry. It usually stops after a second. But, but I'll just repeat myself a little louder. This puts the elected officials on this list on par with similar-sized department heads in the county. So such as land conservation and forestry. So they are both at grade sixteen, step four. Actually, Mary Jo's now, and Chris right, it's five now. But it puts them on par with the similar-sized departments.
Bill.
The, this is Bill. The elected officials were not included in the wage study?
Correct.
Has their salaries been compared to like to adjoining counties?
Ah, yeah, Bayfield County is higher than we are. Price County, this is where Price County is gonna be at.
Oh, excuse me. This, the last part of this, this is the last part of the wage study, if I remember right. We couldn't adjust prior to this because of the statute.
Right. We could not, we could not do that for elected officials because we have to set their terms prior to papers being taken out. And papers can be taken out next month, is it?
April fifteenth.
So we have to get this done now. But again, like I said, this puts the elected officials who run departments on par with similar-sized departments in the county.
Your budget allows for this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I move for adoption.
Motion approved by Bill. Seconded by Marty.
Another question.
Yep.
I know when we gave Mary Jo her bump, that was because there was funding from some, from the state, if I remember correctly, that didn't cost us. So when we're doing this, have we adjusted for things like that? Because this is all our cost, correct?
Right. When we did Mary Jo, that was prior wage study. After the wage state was complete, her wage was set then. Same with Chris Hoffman. And all the other department heads.
And where's the clerk of courts in this if we're?
That's every two years. So the clerk of courts, sheriff and.
That's every four years and they run opposite of us.
Yeah, we alternate every two years between electeds.
Okay.
So yeah, it'd be clerk of court, sheriff and coroner in two years.
Any more discussion? Have a motion and a second to approve. Hold in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm opposed.
Go to F, approve employee handbook updates. And I trust you've all read this.
All right. So yes, this is a long time in working between the clerk's office, myself, we, and the executive committee, where we made some, a bunch of the changes to finally sending it off to corporate counsel to get all the legal stuff updated. So it is finally updated to code, to his current statutes. As much as the stuff surrounding Act ten that was in place, was taken out and replaced, we believe this is a fair, more concise, more consistent handbook for people.
You have a motion.
Do you want the motion or discussion first? We've been kind of going back and forth.
Technically, you're supposed to have the motion first.
So Brad Ray will move to adopt the handbook.
Motion to adopt. Do you have a second?
Laura Nagro, a second.
On page twelve, I believe Max made a comment that, I think it was page twelve, somebody that has it in front of them can look, but about the carryover of whether January first, two thousand and twelve, that didn't seem to be clarified based off that comment. And I think that should be clarified. Somebody have? The comment was, does the payout of sick leave apply to employees hired after January first, two thousand and one? This is worded as if it only applies to employees hired before the date to get this payout. And then they only get payout. So I didn't see any clarification of that comment and that seems like a legitimate question.
So employees hired after two thousand and eleven. Let all the soup go here.
So after Act ten, employees hired after one-one of twelve receive up to two hundred and forty hours of, two hundred and forty hours to accumulate fifty percent payout of up to that hired after twelve. Anybody hired before one-one, two thousand and twelve can accumulate, could accumulate up to ninety days for payout at a hundred percent. Does that?
Any more comments?
This is Laura. On that specific piece, shouldn't the handbook reflect those numbers then?
I think the handbook does, but what the question here is that the way it's worded is anybody hired since January first, two thousand and twelve does not get a payout at all.
Until you retire, unless you retire, you do not get paid out sick leave.
Right, but it says only, okay.
Only people, yeah. Yeah. So people hired prior to two thousand and twelve could still get a payout. Because that's when Act ten happened.
But the way the paragraph starts is if you're hired before January first, two thousand and twelve, you can get those hours. After, you only get fifty percent of what you accumulated. There's nothing about being hired after January first that you get fifty percent payout.
Misplaced modifier kind of thing.
And so Mac, I think, I'm assuming it's Mac that made the comment. And it didn't seem to be addressed in the wording. And that's, so, so yes, Sheriff Poofall, I did read the handbook. And that was the only question I have. It doesn't seem worded right.
So Brad, the, the way it is, if a person hired, and I understand what you're saying with that, a person hired prior to twelve, if they fall below the two forty, then they would only get fifty percent of that.
I didn't see anywhere in there hired after two thousand and twelve.
Right. And it's only paid out upon retirement, like Brad said.
But I almost wonder if that needs to just be clarified someplace in there. Just add a sentence. For those hired after will be paid out fifty percent of up to two hundred and forty. But I almost wonder if that needs to just be clarified someplace in there. Just add a sentence, for those hired after will be paid out fifty percent of up to two hundred forty hours. Simple line. Just add another little paragraph in there. So.
You don't want to offer that as an amendment?
So as an amendment to add a line that basically says, uh, those hired after January first, two thousand twelve, upon retirement, death, or disability, the employee of or their estate will be paid fifty percent of unused time in their sick bank um, up to two hundred and forty hours.
And I'll second that amendment.
Any more discussion? We have a second.
Yeah, I did.
It's so long ago.
We need a vote on the amendment.
Motion to approve the amendment. Handbook updates with the amendment added.
But they might you have to vote on the amendment first.
Let me repeat it. You have to vote on the amendment first. All right, we have to vote on the amendment. Hold on in favor, say aye.
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 You have a post. Motion carries.
Right, you can vote on the handbook as an amendment.
I vote on the thing. I want to vote.
I will approve. Vote on the uh handbook updates with the amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We go to F G. First staffing agreement for the jail.
Okay, this came in front of P P L E last night. Um, and Sheriff Supkey stated that this is uh, agreement is needed to file with the state. Um, it reflects current stat or current budgeted staffing levels. And uh, P P L E voted unanimously to accept it.
Questions, Laura?
I'll make the motion that we um pass this staffing agreement.
I'll make the second. Thank you. Franek.
Pat. In the first paragraph, the bottom sentence line, it says required to endure the health. Is that supposed to be ensure?
Yes.
Could we change endure to ensure?
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
If you'll accept that correction without a motion.
Yeah, we can we can pick that technical correction, yes.
I've got a, this is Mike. I have a discussion item. Are these new positions or are these creative positions or are these existing positions?
Um, this is Laura Nager. Um, this is just a statement of what the positions are. The state needs to have a document through us that has these positions written down.
So they're existing positions?
These are existing.
Existing.
So they are in the twenty four books.
These are the current position, the existing position, positions that we budgeted for.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bill.
Are we going to have to hire someone if we pass this? Or are you going to have to hire additional people? Or is this just what we have in existence?
No, we're not gonna have to hire anybody.
Any more comments? We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? She carries, thank you. Prove letter of agreement for humane officer.
Okay, this too was approved by P P L E last night. Um, the background is our former humane officer Kelly Hyde is retiring um, and moving out of state, so she's selling her business. Um, Ashley is the new, is the person purchasing her her business from her, and she has already started doing some work for the county. Um, there was a question about possibly having the Humane Society do it. Um, that's something we can still pursue. This contract runs through twenty five, so we can make, we can go to the Humane Society, see if they even have the capacity in that time period.
Brad Ray will make, oh, sorry.
Mike Stark moved to approve the agreements.
Brad Ray, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed?
I'll abstain.
Notice five seven, resolution R O three, twenty twenty four, fourteen sixty nine, to draft dark sky week.
So the town of Morris asked us to put this on the agenda and Supervisor Huber, would you like to?
Yes, the town of Morris and then the friends of Copper Falls um, put this together um to be recognized as a dark sky in Wisconsin. There's only one other place where it's recognized as a dark sky in Wisconsin. So Copper Falls would uh like to have this um no notice so that it would be out and people could see this and they would have more business at Copper Falls and for the Ashland County. So it's just um to adopt that dark sky and then the people come in and view the stars at Copper Falls deeply.
Kathy.
I'll make a motion we adopt this resolution.
Uh, this is Marty V. Deck. I'll second it. It's about time those people in the dark.
Yeah.
What?
I just to point out that if the weather changes on us tonight, you'll be able to see the northern lights. So it might actually really work out well.
How'd you pull that off, Rich?
Well, I've been going on for a while, so.
Any more comments? A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Wasn't curious, thank you. Right now we have several resolutions honoring retirees from the board. And you wanna hear that?
Sure. Um. I believe our head of course is getting them already. You want to bring up these resolutions?
Okay, the first one is R O three, twenty twenty four, fourteen sixty four, honoring Supervisor McKenzie.
Do we need to motion and accept each one of these, or can we do them as a package? Can we do them as a package, please? Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think that each one of these should be done separately because George Mika gave thirty two years and to bundle them all together, I don't think it's fair to the people you're recognizing. I'll make the motion. I can't.
And your motion is to do these individually?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed?
Okay.
Was curious. Yep, why don't you?
Yeah. Yes.
I don't have them here. Oh, Matt McKenzie.
Here.
You're up. You're up getting your resolution.
I'll make a motion to pass a resolution honoring Matt McKenzie.
Second.
Individual motions?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations.
The only thing I'll say is it's actually been an honor for me to do this and not so much that I felt a need to be honored, but thank you.
Supervisor.
I move to adopt resolution number R O three, twenty twenty four, fourteen sixty five, in honoring George Mika for thirty two years of excellent service. Five a second.
Motion been made and seconded to honor Mr. Mika for his service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Biden to be here shaking hands, but I guess he's too busy.
Resolution R O three, twenty twenty four, fourteen sixty six. Upgrade honoring our supervisor shooting.
Move to adopt.
Second, Franek.
A motion and a second to adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
I too would like to say thank you for twelve years of uh, I have enjoyed being on the county board, and some of you may not understand that, but I have really enjoyed it. It wasn't my real choice to end it this soon, but life has taken me down a different path. So I hope you all have a great life and and go forward and have fun and protect our county. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Resolution R O three, twenty twenty four, fourteen sixty seven. Offering honoring Supervisor Carl.
This is Laura. I'll make a motion uh to pass resolution R O twenty twenty four, fourteen sixty seven, honoring Lou Carl Carl.
Bill.
We'll second that motion.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Kathy. Louise, no. Resolution R O three, twenty twenty four, fourteen sixty eight, offering Supervisor Winner. Gary.
I'd make that motion.
Motion second to approve. All in favor? I would just like to say that this has been one of the most interesting things in my whole lifetime. I've done a lot of crazy, stupid things, but this is one of them. And like I do say, the first day I took this stuff on, I was so green that I never knew what a genia was. I had to ask my Uncle Cleon Smith over there, which was the chairman for ten years in Glidden and on the school board for nine, I had to ask him where a genia was. So all green is a gift. But I tell you what, coming right till now, if it wasn't be for me leaving, I'd be here to the end because it's just the committees that I was on and the people, especially George Mitka. When I was so green, he helped me through. I was on two committees with him. I thank George so much for what you've done for me, George. And uh, anybody else that had some input with me, I it was such a great ride. Thank you so much. Thanks, John.
Microphone, please.
He's way back in the chief states. Okay, we'll go on to reports and updates administrator.
Okay, well, we got some good news to share. Um, Heather, can you please share the first one? So, um, we we received, well, tomorrow we will. Uh, we'll be receiving our payment uh, to the state appropriate to repay us for the taxes taxes that we had to settle with the schools in the towns. So it's one point eight seven million dollars. So we will go into legislature next year to try to recover the rest. As you all may remember, they took some of our money, gave it to the school district, withheld some for uh, next year's tax charge backs. And then, of course, we had to pay our own charge back. So we will be going back to them to recover those funds. But we got the bulk of it coming in tomorrow, one point eight seven million. So and that there is a resolution this board passed, so it is going to go into savings until the board decides otherwise. Um, Heather, can you pass next, the next one? And go down one page. Hey, this was even better news. Well, I don't know if it's not better, but still great news.
I have a question about this uh, one point eight seven three million.
Yeah.
Is have we paid all the districts off uh that we owe? Is this strictly our money that we're getting reimbursed?
That we paid all, we pay the towns and the schools off every year as the as the payments were due. This is money that is due strictly to us now. So this all goes into the bank for us. We don't owe anybody anything. Okay, so this one, um, finance committee mostly has been hearing this one. Sales tax numbers, it took a huge jump last month. Um, that that represents the month of uh December, because there's always a two month lag. We're wondering what would happen once we hit twenty twenty four, the month of January. Well, those numbers just came out and we're still twenty thousand dollars above last year. So, you know, even with all the lack of snow and lack of cold, our sales tax numbers are growing. And so far to date, we're up twenty percent over last year. So let's hope that trend continues and it's a good good thing people are spending money. So, um, so I thought I reached into that. Uh, let's see, is there something else over there? No. Okay, here are the staffing changes. No, okay, here are the staffing changes.
Did the county find a grant writer?
No, we've had one applicant who is not qualified. So. We're gonna have to try some other methods of searching. Okay. Okay, and I got one final thing. Everybody knows reorg is next is by statute, the third Tuesday in April. Which this year happens to be the 16th. We are going to start the after talking to Chair Pufal and Vice Chair Mertig, we're going to start that meeting at two o'clock. Two o'clock for reorg. And main reason that gives everybody who works better opportunity to get here.
What happens when you can't attend?
I mean, you you can get sworn into office beforehand or after.
So here's my, I will not be here on the 16th. Just just a comment. That that would mean you'd have to get reelected. I I still got my two votes, so I'm I'm all right.
Yeah, Brad, you can you can come in later and Heather can can sorry. You can come in in the morning and Heather can swear you're in.
When is that time again and the date?
Two o'clock on the 16th.
I was gonna back up to see how the Hudson Bay Dam is coming along.
Okay, so the ferry hotel did sign an easement for that, which is on file at the registered deeds. Highway department is just waiting for. Weather to be good enough, ground conditions to be good enough to start clearing a road there and start getting work done. They they got to do some patching. Let's see, there has to be a guardrail put up. And then when they get there and start working, they might find a few other things. That we can special assess that to the to the residents who live on Spider Lake. And all the residents there know that. They, in fact, that was the option they preferred. It's that that we special assess them instead of them forming a lake district. So, yeah, so weather permitting, we'll get it out. But.
The reorganization meeting is important.
Yes.
You're for a variety of reasons. We have one person who can't attend, including on Zoom there. I'm just wondering if, and we don't know who else is going to be here. I'm just wondering if we couldn't. Maybe make it evening or do some survey of members to see what time results into most people being able to attend.
Sure.
Because he says he can't make it noon to five, including Zoom and because we do want, you know, more people that are working to consider running for the county board and.
And that's why I work at sorry, look, gonna do two o'clock. That would give people enough time to drive home during with daylight yet.
Well, it's light till 7:30 or more. I was just wondering if we couldn't do 5:30, 6:00 even.
Yeah, but we couldn't do that in the winter. Like it's dark at 4:30.
Well, no, it's not getting dark till 7:30 or more. No, we've had daylight savings, by the way.
So if board members wanted to make the time different, that's fine. If you do the consensus time.
Well, what this is Bill. What was the matter with nine o'clock?
It's hard for it's hard for people like Supervisor Negro, Supervisor Ray, Supervisor Ellison, Supervisor Franek.
I I just happen to have a annual meeting that happens on the third Tuesday. Every year. From noon to five and and I have to I have to be at that meeting because that's work. I cannot miss that.
Right.
I am Wisconsin's representative about that meeting. I have to be there, so. Next, next or three weeks, nine o'clock works for me because of that meeting, but typically this time is not as conducive as a two o'clock would be. For me because of my work schedule.
So, sorry, Brad. So Brad, you can come in in the morning and get sworn in. Does anybody else have any objections?
Well, we have election of a board chair and there's 21 seats and if we know one person can't be there, then we potentially have an even number 20.
We're gonna have an odd. There's two, there's two seats where there's not running.
All right, so then we're at 18.
Yeah, so we're.
So so tell it, tell us if it turns out to be a tie repeatedly, then what?
You're gonna be voting until somebody changes their mind.
Or that until somebody that's working comes to the meeting.
I'll show up at five o'clock to help out if it's going on.
It's it's we do Rochambeau and then we go to arm wrestling.
The worse comes the worse. You flip a coin.
You know what you got?
All right, so we'll try two o'clock and if you guys like that and it works for people, we can maybe stay at that time.
If you.
Then we wait till after the new board is sworn in and find out what they want rather than what.
Right.
Okay.
If you want. Want to change that to the different time to accommodate, Brad, I don't have a problem with.
Well, I'm also, like I said, I'm also worried about. Some other supervisors and Blake and who and Liz, who it's hard for them to be here at nine. Because that's the beginning of the day. End of their days are usually much easier to get out of.
How about later?
We could go at five, we could go five or 5:30 if people want.
I think you should wait till a new board gets on because they.
Well, they won't be sworn in, but they won't.
Right, for one meeting, I understand.
Right, this board will still be the county board up until the new board is sworn in, so. So something something crazy happens on April 15th, this is the board that would still act on it.
Does it have to be on that Tuesday? Can it be on a Monday?
Yeah, by state statute, it has to be the third Tuesday in April. And Mayor McKenzie said he'll be here at 5:00 AM.
Anything else? Liz.
Um, in the light of our Bad River members that have spoken today, is there any way we can make reparations to their damaged egos or not egos, but. Like.
Point of order. It's not an agenda item. It's not proper to discuss it at this meeting.
But in the future, can we have more joint meetings to make those reparations?
There are, there is a try a meeting with the tribe on April 17th. At two o'clock here. I will say we do not have enough room here to have the entire county board and entire tribal council in here. But any county board members welcome to attend.
Kathy.
Are we doing supervisors' reports?
You are.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted the board to know that there is a person, he's my next door neighbor and his name is Jim Schultz. And he will be on the ballot for District 18, which is my seat. He's a pretty nice guy. We've been neighbors for all our lives and I think you'll enjoy having him on the board.
Anybody else? Laura.
I didn't, I I forgot to sign in for public comment, but it's about the aging unit and the meals. We've got this whole situation going on with Northland College and guess where I get my food for everybody? Northland College. I don't know what's going to happen with them and I know everybody's like, wait, the thing is, is now that there's been this situation, I need to not have all my eggs in that basket, which is going to. Mean I need to find other contracts. I don't know what it's going to cost me for meals. I don't know that I'll be able to continue the service. At the same level as what we've been doing because our our numbers have been constantly going up and we've offered different options such as going to Northland College to eat, so. And if Tertwill's isn't there, Northland's not there, or if Northland's not there, Tertwill's isn't there, so. I've got talks with the school. I'm trying to get a hold of the hospital. I'm looking at different restaurant services, but. The thing is, is I don't know what kind of service I'll be able to continue doing. Am I worried? A bit. I know how much Northland brings into a five county area. They've they've been on that. I don't know that even if they do make the 12 million that it's reliable to continue because of the path that they've created. If you guys have any ideas or know somebody that might be able to help with more money because I may be coming back for and asking for a higher allocation, depending on what kind of prices I find for meals. But it's. There will be meals where state statute required. Like I said, I just don't know the level of service I'm going to be able to continue to provide.
Matt.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
I got, I'd like to say something. I'd like to know where the.
Rich, Rich, a motion to adjourn is pervert.
Sorry.
Have a second.
No second?
Okay, Rich.
There's a motion and a second.
The man speak.
I think it would be nice if the chairman said, is there any other business? And if nobody says, then Matt McKenzie can say we adjourn, but Rich had something he wanted to say.
Rich, you can say something outside of the meeting now. Everybody's still here.
It isn't good.
Are we adjourned or not?
We have a we have a motion. We have a second.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second. We're adjourned.